...open public meetings act. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of this public meeting was provided in the notice of January 5th, 2016. Said notice was posted at the entrance of the Board of Education offices, mailed to the Nutley Sun, the Star Ledger, the North Jersey Herald-News, and the Nutley Journal, mailed to the Nutley Township Clerk, advertised the Nutley Sun and Star Ledger on January 14th, 2016, and posted on the district website. This is an official meeting. In consideration of all your present and the recognition of the importance of these proceedings, it is requested that all cell phones be turned off or silenced before any meeting. Please rise and relax.
I pledge the Oath of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Mr. Balsama?
Here.
Mr. Carnicella?
Here.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin? Mr. Ferraro?
Here.
Mr. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Here.
Ms. Russo?
Here.
Mr. Scolera? Ms. Sherman?
She's on her way.
On Tuesday, November 8th, 2016, the annual school board election for the Nutley School District was held. Voting was conducted for the election of three members to the Board of Education, each for a three-year term. The results of the election were as follows. Charles W. Kuzinski, 6,417 votes. Daniel A. Carnicella, 5,958 votes. Brenda Sherman, 5,806 votes. Candidates were duly elected for a term of three years. A copy of this report will be entered in the official minutes of the Board of Education. At this time, I would like to administer the oath to the groups of board members, and we will start with Mr. Carnicella. Could you join me at the microphone? Along with any family members without you? I, Daniel A. Carnicella, do solemnly swear...
I, Daniel A. Carnicella, do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey...
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey...
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same...
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same...
And to the governments established in the United States and this state...
And to the governments established in the United States and this state...
Under the authority of the people...
Under the authority of the people...
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Daniel A. Carnicella, do solemnly swear...
I, Daniel A. Carnicella, do solemnly swear...
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law...
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law...
For the office of member of a Board of Education...
For the office of member of a Board of Education...
Am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
And I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
Why do you have a G T? And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly...
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly...
Perform all duties of that office...
Perform all duties of that office...
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability...
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. On behalf of the Board of Camesters, relative to the election held in the County of Essex on the 8th day of November in the year of our Lord 2016, the election of school board member in the township of Nutley for the County of Essex, Daniel A. Carnicella was duly elected school board member. I do hereby certify that the foregoing is a true and correct statement of the determination of the Essex County Clerk and witness whereof I am going to set my hand this first day of January in the year of our Lord 2017, signed Christopher J. Durkin. Why don't we all get together? You don't want to do that.
Do you need this G T or did you make your call?
Oh, my goodness. Someone's been wanting to pull her ass.
I think it was you.
I, Charles W. Kuzinski, do solemnly swear...
I, Charles W. Kuzinski, do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey...
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey...
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same...
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same...
And to the governments established in the United States and this state...
And to the governments established in the United States and this state...
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
I, Charles W. Kuzinski, do solemnly swear...
I, Charles W. Kuzinski, do solemnly swear...
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law...
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law...
For the office of member of a Board of Education...
For the office of member of a Board of Education...
Am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
Am not qualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly...
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly...
Perform all duties of that office...
Perform all duties of that office...
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability...
So help me God.
So help me God.
And I'd like to present you with the same certificate from the board director.
Thank you very much.
I think right now we're going to move on to the superintendents before we'll agree to form a sure. I'll hold off on my congratulations. I'm going to say we'll come back to them. But happy new year, everyone. I'm hopeful that you had a rejuvenating break with family and friends and are as excited as I am to be back and looking ahead. I do want to thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, all the family members that were able to join us tonight for these proceedings. It's a pretty special evening. But I do want to say to you all, please don't wait for an invitation to come back. We'd love to have you at any meeting, any time. We at Central Office started the new year with a visit from the New Jersey Department of Education's Office of Fiscal Accountability and Compliance. They conducted an audit of the Carl Perkins Federal Awards Fund. Our exit interviews revealed an exemplary use of the funds with no recommendations. Excited about that. Thank you to our Assistant Business Administrator John Mahora, Director of Technology Andrew Lee, for all of your efforts to provide the necessary information, and to our own Dr. James Riley for leading our fine performing and practical arts programs, including the work of Mr. Kelly and our student team who are effectively using these funds to make a difference in the district. Truly, thank you. I am hopeful that everyone received the information on our upcoming town hall meetings to discuss our potential construction projects. As you've heard discussed here, over the previous months, I would say, this is not the first time, we have significant overcrowding issues and emergent programming needs that require some action. So I will ask and encourage that you please mark your calendar to plan to attend one of the five scheduled meetings that are upcoming. You will have an opportunity to hear from the Board President, myself, our Business Administrator Derek Yeeman, and the architects. You will have the opportunity to review concept drawings, and of course, there'll be a period for discussion, for questions and answers at each town hall meeting. I'll save the dates now for the record, but all of the information is also posted on the district website and on social media. We start with our first meeting on Tuesday, January 17th, at 7:00 p.m. at Yanacaw School in the auditorium. The next night, Wednesday, January 18th, also at 7:00 p.m., we'll be at Lincoln School in the auditorium. On Thursday, January 19th, 7:00 p.m., Washington School Auditorium. Then Wednesday, February 1st, 7:00 p.m., Spring Garden School Auditorium. Wednesday, February 8th, 7:00 p.m., the Radcliffe School Media Center. If you represent a community organization, if you are a parent group, if you are a taxpayer group, any and all of the above, and would like to schedule a meeting with district representatives on this topic, just let us know. We'll be happy to try and schedule a time that's convenient for you to come out and provide information and answer your questions. And having given you all of those dates, you know that being on the Board of Education is a relatively thankless job. I think that I just listed five nights in a row where everybody is out in the community, and that does include our principals, our coordinators. It's a lot. January, I don't know if you know this, but January is New Jersey School Board Recognition Month. So it seemed fitting here at the reorganization meeting to honor our own Nutley Board of Education's school board members. The Board of Education, as I hope you know, plays an essential role in the lives of our students, setting policies for our schools, making important decisions affecting curriculum, financing, staffing, and as I think you also know, our board members devote countless hours with no compensation and spend a tremendous amount of time on the oversight and advancement of Nutley's children's education. I would say that it's one of our most important roles. And to that end, I would ask that you please join me, all of you, in recognizing the efforts of our volunteer board and their dedication and service on behalf of the Nutley community. Thank you. So, I wanted to say, you don't want to hear the jokes that I know. No, good. But I will say, as we prepare to move forward into the new school year, it's not just meetings. I know that we have, I don't see our student representatives will push forward with it. I know we have the fashion show coming up on January 13th. We're starting a whole new series of getting ready for our spring plays, for all of our groups being active on their next rounds of service projects. And again, as you hear about this information on the district website and social media and the calendars, we do appreciate your help and assistance in coming out and supporting the efforts of, in this case, mostly our students. But it does take a tremendous team effort to make sure that all of these things happen. So I love seeing you in the audience. I love having an audience to be able to share this information with, and hope that you will continue to support our efforts. Five minutes wasn't here. So the only other thing that I would say, why don't we go to the hearing of citizens on the resolutions? I don't think that there's much else to do. We now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on only the resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. Our Board Regulation 601 allows 20 minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once, only after all others wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board and sign in when this is conclusive before you take the microphone. Will the first person please step forward and tell us what you wish to say? Well, if you have a joke, I encourage you to try that. Okay, there may be none. All right. Well, I think we have to start gathering family members who are here.
Well, the news is we just got a report she is parking department.
Okay. Any Sherman's family members already arrived? Sherman's family members, please come down so we can greet, well, people greet her. She is, she's going to feel terrible. You can calm her down and make her feel better. We'll at least let her take her coat off. I don't know. I think all the pictures should have the coat in.
Lock the light, lock it to the door.
Now you don't want to welcome her, make her feel bad. Especially if you missed that. No, we know. That's why we figured she'd rather see your smiling face than us. My very first night I was coming to meet Mr. Ferraro, I gave myself two hours before the board meeting. How far of the distance I make it, like six minutes? Sometimes it's just that way. Nothing you can do. Doesn't make you feel any better about it, but there's nothing you can do. Boy, would just all smile at her kindly. Kindly and warmly. Tell her we're welcoming her kindly.
Maybe shut the lights on when she walks in.
Not a Sherman's family member.
What do you think, Commissioner?
I'm so embarrassed. I am so, so sorry. I've never been like that.
Take a second. Take your coat off. Do you want to drink an ice cream? Well, then join us in the front. Take a deep breath and join me in front. Yes, and your family. We'll only take somebody. It goes up, everybody.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me.
I, Brenda Sherman, do solemnly swear...
I, Brenda Sherman, do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey...
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey...
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same...
And to the governments established in the United States and this state...
And to the governments established in the United States and this state...
Under the authority of the people...
Under the authority of the people...
So help me God.
So help me God.
And I, Brenda Sherman, do solemnly swear...
I, Brenda Sherman, do solemnly swear...
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law...
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law...
For the office of member of a Board of Education...
For the office of member of a Board of Education...
Am not disqualified as a voter...
I am not disqualified as a voter...
Pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
Pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly...
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly...
Perform all duties of that office...
Perform all duties of that office...
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability...
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Earlier this evening, this is the statement of the determination of the Board of Camesters from Christopher Durkin's office on your election.
Thank you.
And please see how to decide. Okay, we're going to do a group picture for after you sign. Mr. Balsama?
Here.
Mr. Carnicella?
Here.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin? Here. Mr. Ferraro?
Here.
Mr. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Here.
Ms. Russo?
Here.
Mr. Scolera? Ms. Sherman? At this time, I am going to take nominations for the office of the president.
Yes, Mr. Secretary of Management, I take your big motion to nominate Daniel Carnicella for the position of Board President.
Any further nominations? There being no further nominations, it is declared that the nominations are now closed. Mrs. Kakuza, please take the vote for president. Mr. Balsama?
Yes.
Mr. Carnicella?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Nominations are now in order for the office of Vice President.
Mr. President, it is me great pleasure and delight to nominate Danny Russo, or is that how you call him, Adam Love's president?
Second. There being no further nominations, it is declared that the nominations are closed. Mrs. Kakuza, please take a vote for Vice President.
Mr. Balsama?
Yes.
Mr. Carnicella?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Sure. Yes. Code of Ethics for school board members, E team A, 12 to 24, 21, be resolved. Board of Education here I clarify adopted the following code of ethics as established by the New Jersey School Boards Association. A school board member shall abide by the following code of ethics, school board members. One, I will uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the State Board of Education and board orders pertaining to schools. Desireed changes shall be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures. Two, I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children and will seek to develop and engage public schools and meet individual needs of all children regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing. Three, I will confine my board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and I will help to bring policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by them. Four, I will carry out my responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow board members to see that they are well-run. Five, I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education and will make no personal promises nor take any private action that may compromise the board. Six, I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends. Seven, I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools which, if disclosed, would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all other matters, I will provide accurate information and, in concert with my fellow board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its screen. Eight, I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the chief administrative officer. Nine, I will support and protect school personnel and proper performance of their duty. Ten, I will refer all complaints to the chief administrative officer and will act on the complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative solution.
Thank you, Mr. Balsama. So can we have an acknowledgement of the board?
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
Thank you.
Mr. Kuzinski, could you take administration?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Administration Resolution 1, adoption of scheduled meetings.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, Mrs. Kuzinski.
Mr. Balsama?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Carnicella?
Yes.
Mr. Fine, would you take finance?
Yes, Mr. President, I move finance, Resolution 1, I agree.
Second. Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Balsama?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Carnicella?
Yes.
In this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our regulations allot 30 minutes for these communications. Again, each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. As stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me...
To me.
To me. Will the first person please step forward and tell us what he would wish to say?
Good job.
Is there any old business for the board? Any new business for the board? I just wanted to make a statement tonight, and I would like to thank the community for once again coming out on Election Day and supporting the Nutley Board of Education trustees. Although the election was uncontested, it was inspiring to see that the voters of Nutley continued their support for the trustees that serve on the Nutley Board of Education. I would also like to extend a warm welcome and a gracious thank you to the mayor and the Nutley Board of Commissioners. Despite the challenges facing our township, it continued to be an anchor of stability in times of uncertainty. you continue to be an anchor of stability in times of uncertainty. You all have been available to support the needs of the district in a moment's notice and we cannot be more appreciative of those efforts. Last but not least, a special thank you to my fellow board trustees as well as our superintendent of schools, Dr. Julie Glazer. We truly are a team in every sense of the word. I'm privileged to be a part of a group that can agree, disagree, laugh, argue, make up, but most of all, build consensus for the good of the community. And in closing, I hope everyone receives this message as an invitation to work collectively in our efforts to provide the best educational foundation for our students and enjoy each of those successes within our community. To a happy and healthy 2017. Thank you.
President, I think I just might.
Sure.
I did just want to take a quick moment to acknowledge my sister Rhonda and my niece Megan who came here from Sparta to be here. Sparta's late. I'd like to thank everyone for their patience. I apologize for being late. It's rarely happens. I'd like to acknowledge longtime friend, Dr. Joe, Mayor of Scarpelli, who we've been through a lot of committee meetings, adventures, and the township of Nutley together for many years and glad you could be here. I'd like to also acknowledge and thank Commissioner Tucci and Commissioner Petrallo for coming out here tonight as well. I've worked on a lot of community events, related to life with Commissioner Tucci, and I thank you for taking time out of your very busy schedules to be here and I look forward to working with you going forward. Most importantly, I'd like to thank the fellow board members. You know, the decision to run for a three-year term was a tough one for me because of demands of my time, both with family and work and other community projects. But each and every one of you have brought something special to this board and I got me very excited about continuing to work with each and every one of you going forward. There were a lot of challenges that we faced in this district, but I do believe that we all bring something unique to this table and our desire to volunteer our time for the betterment of our community is essential. So I'd just like to thank everyone once again for coming out and the help board members.
Say, if I may, I just want to say thank you, Mr. Kozinski, for the year past as President. And in my first year, there was a lot of catching up to do and I just appreciate his leadership and guidance over the past year and the many exciting things we had to do right off the bat.
Thank you, Senator.
I'm good.
Just give me real quick, I want to add a little something to this, Charlie. You've done this a long time. You've committed a lot of your time away from your family for the betterment of our community and our kids, so I want to thank you for that.
We all do, and thank you, Senator.
I should say something? And I'm gonna just make one final statement and this is definitely for Mr. Kozinski. I've never met someone with the tenacity that someone like Mr. Kozinski possesses. He is a go-getter. He is always on the front lines and I tell people around me that if I ever had to go into a battle, that guy would be the thing because he is there at the front of everything. Good or bad, regardless of outcomes, he's there to really lend a hand and keep it together. And I can't, I don't think anyone could appreciate more out of a person. And then he's just a wonderful, wonderful soul and I appreciate that.
I feel like I'm going out of the pasture or something. I'm gonna reelect you too, so I'm feeling... I'm calling you anywhere.
So I guess you don't want us to give this little drink that we got?
No.
Thought I missed one.
You're lucky to have a board like we have.
Okay, so. Motion to adjourn?
Some of us.
Second.
All of you.
Congratulations.